Good evening and welcome to the October 2020 Lone Tree City Council Meeting. We will wait till 7:05 to begin our formal meeting to allow time for folks to join us virtually. In the meantime, I'll talk about how we're handling our virtual meetings. So in support of the social distancing requirements and based on space limitation in our building, the city is limiting physical attendance at public meetings to only essential staff, applicants, and elected officials, and we will continue to broadcast these meetings virtually via electronic participation for members of the public. All attendees are required to wear face coverings when entering and exiting the building and when within six feet of another person. The city also implements symptom-modering measures for our attendees, including temperature checks and completion of the city's facilities' health screening survey before entering the building. During our virtual meetings, public comment can be entered three ways. Comments that were submitted in writing prior to the meeting are forwarded to council and will be included in the official meeting minutes. During our council meetings, if you would like to type a public comment during that portion of our agenda or during a public hearing, click on the "Ask a Question" in the sidebar of our virtual meeting and enter your name and address in the message window along with your public comment. Your name and comments will be forwarded to city council and included in the official minute meeting. If you would like to speak to council live during our meetings, you may use your telephone, using your telephone, please indicate that in the "Ask a Question" box, submit your name, address, and phone number, and you will receive a call from the city during our meeting, and you can state your public comment via your phone. All public comments should be directed to city council, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. And again, we are going to pause till 7:05 to begin our formal meeting to allow time for the public to... I will just ask for your patience. And again, if you want to look at your computer screen, it goes over the three ways public comment can be submitted during our virtual meetings. So thanks. And these, yes, are the longest three minutes of the day. Yeah, we should have some music. Maybe we could have a musical interlude. our meeting to allow time for folks to connect virtually for this meeting. You can review on your screen right now the ways that you may submit public comment during our virtual meetings. And again, thank you for your patience. Okay, it is 7:05. Welcome to the October 2020 Lone Tree City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum. I am opening our meeting, and I will ask everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we are going to adopt our agenda as published. There are no amendments. Are there any conflicts of interest from council?
None.
None here.
Wonderful. Okay, now we are moving on to public comment. I did review the procedures for public comment as we were waiting to start our meeting, but just as a refresher, council, there are three ways to submit comment during our virtual meetings. Comments submitted ahead of time will be forwarded to council and included in the official meeting record. If you would like to type a comment during our public comment session, which is right now, click on the "Ask a Question" bar and submit your name, address, and type your comment, and again, it will be forwarded to council and included in the official meeting record. If you would like to ask a question or speak to council, excuse me, directly, you can, in the "Ask a Question" sidebar, indicate that you would like to be connected via telephone to our meeting this evening, include your name, address, and the city will reach you by telephone to hear your comment. And again, comments are limited to three minutes. Even though you're asking it in an "Ask a Question," this is not a question-and-answer period. It is a time for you to provide feedback to council on what your thoughts are. So we will have any follow-up after the meeting with staff. I'm going to pause briefly to allow time for anybody to click on that "Ask a Question" box. And while we're doing that, I am going to read our announcements this evening, and then I will check with our city clerk to see if we've got any public comment. So some upcoming events happening in the city of Lone Tree. And again, more information can always be found at citoyoflontree.com or lonetreeartscenter.org. There is a 24-hour ballot drop box located on the east side of our Lone Tree City Municipal Building at 922 Kimmer Drive. There is COVID community testing at the Lone Tree Arts Center every Monday from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. Visit the city website for more information. And again, when the tests do run out, they're closed. So if you came after one or two the other day and we didn't have any more tests, the site was closed. But again, look for information on the city website. Adam Pascal, so far, is happening Saturday, October 24th, at the Lone Tree Arts Center main stage and via virtual livestream. There will be a 1:30 p.m. performance and an 8:00 p.m. performance. Again, more information at lonetreeartscenter.org. Virtual arts in the afternoon, Kenny Motten from Blues to Broadway, will be happening Wednesday, 28th, at 1:30. Again, that's a virtual livestream performance. Live from London, Choir of Man. If you didn't get to see it live at the Arts Center, this is your next best opportunity, and I think this is going to be a tremendous event, happening Friday, October 30th, at 6:30 p.m. It is a virtual livestream. And we're having our next Community Blood Drive Wednesday, October 28th, from 11:00 to 3:45 p.m. at the Lone Tree Arts Center Event Hall. And again, visit the city website for signup information. I will look to our city clerk to see if anybody has submitted anything for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any requests for public comment.
Okay, I will close our period for public comment and move on to our consent agenda this evening, which includes minutes from our October 6, 2020, regular meeting, claims for the period of September 29th to October 12, 2020, our August 2020 Treasurer's Report, and Resolution 20-26, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding for the Douglas County Impact Unit. Are there any questions on consent? And if there are none, I will look for a motion from council.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Moving on to our administrative matters. First up is Resolution 20-27, a resolution approving the 2021 operating plan. We can't wait to get to 2021. And budget for the Park Meadows Business Improvement District. I'm already loving that we're thinking to 2021, and Jeff Holwell from the city staff is going to lead off this presentation, which will be joined by Pam Shank Kelly and Whitney Miller. Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, just tell me in advance.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for your time tonight. I am very pleased to present Resolution 2027 this evening, which is approval of the Park Meadows BID operating and planning budget for 2021. The budget was received on time and reviewed thoroughly by staff. We recommend approval of this budget, and we're thrilled to have Park Meadows and their representatives here tonight to hear about 2020 and their plans for 2021. The Park Meadows BID, for your reference, is a business improvement district representing the property that includes the Park Meadows Retail Resort, all of those properties within the Ring Road, plus the restaurant properties northeast of the Ring Road that you can see on the northeast side of this diagram. Next slide, please. The suggested motion from staff is to approve Resolution 2027. This slide will appear again at the end of this presentation for your consideration. But the most exciting part about this presentation is the introduction of Pam Kelly and Whitney Miller with Park Meadows Retail Resort. I'll let them have the microphone.
Thank you, Jeff, and we'll give them an opportunity to come up to a sanitized stand. And again, we want to always acknowledge the great partnership between the city and Park Meadows Business Improvement District in addition to the mall. And as we said, we cannot wait to talk about 2021. But with that, whenever you two are ready, please feel free to step up to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. I think I have enough distance.
Yes, you do.
Every year, one of the things we really look forward to is getting to see the staff and the council to talk about the year we just had and the upcoming year that we're going to have. We did bring for you something that is a symbol of really where Park Meadows sees themselves in the community today. And we see ourselves as a beacon of kindness and normalness. And so we brought you some mugs. You can use them for coffee. When we bought them, they said they were wine mugs. Whitney picked them out. But they're filled with things like sanitation...
Hand sanitizer.
Hand sanitizer. Of all the people, they can't say that.
Yeah.
And chocolate.
Thank you.
So they're two really necessary things to get through COVID. So 2020 was definitely a year of both challenge and change. We did have some new stores. I get to do the quicker, right?
You know what? Actually, we're keeping that clean and socially distanced as well, so just let Jay know, and he'll advance the slide for you, Pam.
Okay, no problem. And this is really an anomaly. There's not a lot of new retailers that are opening. We actually would have had about eight of them to show you as of March when we closed. That's kind of the things that were put on hold or stopped or stalled. Blue Nile, great store. I hope you get a chance to check that out. Vulcan, really fun. And so Sam, who doesn't like to eat, we also made a little more investment, some of our stores, in Lululemon. Their renovation was really to take out the trailer and create more distancing and space for customers. And the other really exciting thing about Lululemon is they're going to have a gifting hub. So that Seventh Sense CBD kiosk that was also a victim of COVID will be replaced with a Lululemon hub, which is just a really great use. Axles, they moved from the distance to inside. And Watsel Petal, we did a couple of kiosks. We also have under construction and opening next month, Sukia Ramen. And if you've seen them or visited their place in the center, you'll know they're pretty yummy. So with the good comes some of the challenges. So we did have some store closings, about 75,000 square feet in total. Brick and mortar retail, or retail as a whole, is a little challenging. This is a very pivotal year. This holiday season, as I have told both Seth and the Honorable Mayor, is going to be really important to us because it makes or breaks a lot of really important retail things that are going on. And you can see a few of them here that have closed, and as I said, it makes up about 75,000 square feet. Some of the scarier aspects of where retail is today is that we have around 260,000 square feet at Park Meadows that's in some stage of bankruptcy right now. A lot of the retail is about reorganization, but I would want everyone to be mindful that when we did our partnership right off the bat back in 2007, it wasn't the very best time for retail. It wasn't the very best time for the economy. So I think what we really want to do in stating this is that what we're going to talk about upcoming is the type of partnership that we have had over the last 13 years and how important it is that that is something that we maintain in the future. And of course, look to you to help partner with us on furthering bricks and mortar, furthering what the retail or the actual evolution of Park Meadows will be. When we worked together, we did have to change the way we operated a lot. I'm sure that Seth or anyone that handles facilities here will tell you that MERV-13 filtration systems are not inexpensive, and we have a lot of HVAC units. At Park Meadows, we have both what we call the MAC, Mall Air Conditioning, and the TAC, Tenant Air Conditioning Units. So there's hundreds of those. The MERV-13 filtration system, which is so effective and such an important part of really mitigating any type of spread of disease through the air system, those filters also have to be changed every other month. So that makes them quite cost-effective as well. Some of the other implementations of our protocols, and I'm going to give a shout-out to the retailers at Park Meadows right now. The 50% capacity, the storefront line queuing, the number of apps, having to deal with all of that, the mask-wearing, mask distribution, all the touchless systems. But our retailers implementing all of those, it was like four pages of protocols before they could open under the variance that we had. The shout-out I would give them is yes. We have had a case of COVID here and a case of COVID there, but we have 186 stores open, and we have not had any outbreaks. That is something that we celebrate every day. So with that, the city of Lone Tree was very helpful to us, and this is our opportunity to say thank you. It was the city of Lone Tree, definitely driven by their leadership, Douglas County, Tri-County Health Department, and the Colorado Department of Health, they're in here too, on the efforts for us to reopen and have our variance approved. And we still operate only on a variance. Shopping centers are not allowed to open under what the state guidelines are right now. It's really only the variance. We were very proud to be the first shopping center to open. We shared all the information we had on our variance with every shopping center in the state of Colorado, to be honest with you, not just the Denver metropolitan area. When we opened by July, we were able to get about 75% of our tenants that had reopened. We currently are still the only shopping center that operates with a food court open and operating. So while we really focused on what we had to do to be in business today, Whitney never loses sight of how important it is that we protect that asset and we take care of the property as it relates to the future. When we were closed, we had 24-year-old handrails that had many artistic activities going on there. So those needed to really have some areas that were refurbished, and it was an opportunity for her to get that done. That was already, as you know, by looking at last year's budget in the plan, but that was one of the things that we went forward with because we were actually able to do it at less expense. The parking structure, ongoing repairs, we're mentioning that. If you go in there now, you'll see scaffolding all over the place because we wanted to make sure that you knew that although we dropped almost $1 million in capital improvements to make the 2020 budget work better and closer to being zero-based budgeting as it related to the income, we made sure that we still focused on those type of life-safety things that would matter to the constituents and the people and to the image of Lone Tree. Paving and striping, we are continuing to do that as it relates to what needs to be done, not the major half-a-million-and-seven-hundred-thousand-dollar parking lot refurbishing programs, but we'll be doing those in 2022, I'm sure. Common area, ongoing, we continue to do things as needed. We kept many of our amenities. And why we bring that up, the water feature and some of the amenities, is that across the United States, I don't know that everybody's been able to travel that much, but that's really another thing that's happened to retail. A lot of the amenities are just being eliminated. If they have water features, they just drain them because of the cost to maintain them. That wouldn't be anything that we would ever do. We don't think that's consistent with the mission of what is this city, this demographic area, and certainly not a retail resort. One of the other big projects that we just can't wait to debut is, we'd already bought all the fabric, and we're going to do this graduated program of redoing all of the furniture, bringing it into this century. And so it's all done in storage rooms, but it's all done, and we can't wait for that time when people can really enjoy the retail resort the way it was meant to be. So one of the things that was a big part of this last year was public safety and security. The chief, I don't see him here, but I have to say, the chief, commander, all of the staff, everybody has been so instrumental. We have shopping centers. Even right now, when I talk to and deal with our retailers, if you've been maybe Kristin like out shopping or something like that, and you've noticed that retail may be a little light as far as the merchandise that you have in the stores, please know that about November 5th to the 10th, retailers will start putting more merchandise in their stores because they won't be as worried about any kind of social issues and social consequences on them. One of the things that I have in here is the typical stuff that we really work closely with, the police station, South Metro. And also, we do have quarterly meetings and walkthroughs with Tri-County Health. And we work with traffic management. We're even working with the chief and the offices on the preparation for the upcoming election and the actions we have to take. We do know that the sheriff and the chief do have a strike team. We're closing down all of our gates and the whole facility at 11 o'clock on both the 3rd and the 4th. We won't have any problems because we've taken that action. It's only if we don't take the action that we have any problems. A lot of our additional security needs are the same thing that you've had, but honestly, issues with civil unrest and the planning for it and all of those types of things aren't things that we've really thought about worrying about. We've had traffic and circulation issues in the past. We're concerned, I'm sure you have had discussions about what's happening this December, but we have a great deal of trust in the council and in the staff to keep in mind everything that we all have to accomplish this year. One of the other more fun things, we're in fun, is that we wanted to create events and things that would still make the community have something to celebrate and would feel a little bit more resort or fun-like. So we did the pop-up cinema. We had over 3,500 cars attending. This weekend, I don't know if this is a good idea or not, but a couple of the shows are completely sold out. We're having what they call a drive-in drag, which is a big show about costuming and drag queens and different things like that. I'm busy, but if you're available, I think there's still some shows that are there. We did a lot of extended seating. Thank you to the city that helped us with that. When we saw potential as our customer and our sales and traffic counts were getting closer to what we needed, we only have 35% of the seats right now in the dining hall. So adding those additional 75, 80 outside was very important to us on the weekends. We're still in the planning stages as to how we're going to handle holiday with that, but we've already had some support and conversations with the city on that. We had to change completely how we've had to do a lot of different things. To protect some of our sales tax dollars, we really pushed hard on curbside pickup. We're even paying a company, DropIt. DropIt will go to the stores, so if they don't want to do curbside, they will actually, it's an app where you can order what you want. You get dropped into DropIt. When you get to the curbside space, it tracks the whole package. The runners that are paid for by the mall will go to the store, get the item, put it hands-free or no interaction, in gloves, completely sanitized in your car. Spot Holder, that's a program that we put in place so that we don't have gatherings in line. So any of our stores that may not already have had a waitlist-type system, we offered that to them. Still moving forward in a highly optimistic fashion, 470 is done. Woo-hoo!
Yeah.
So with that being the case, we had a plan very early on to focus in on a couple of things. The fact that this was entering our 25th year of operation and holiday, we focused a little differently, but we are going after that customer to the west and to the north that we maybe lost out on a little bit with 470. iHeartMedia, not only do they do radio, but they target over 270 different social media apps and other types of advertising avenues for people that very specifically, whatever they're looking for, y'all know that. If you take a look at anything on your iPad or your laptop, the next thing you know, you're flooded with pop-up ads on that. We're going to be one of your pop-ups. We are going to do The Villager, which is, of course, to the north. CCN, which is Colorado Community Newspaper, which is the Lone Tree Voice as well. We will be doing a blitz with all of them over Thanksgiving. Park Meadows will not be open Thanksgiving Day. If a store has an exterior entrance, they may be able to open that particular day, but there won't be any Thanksgiving shopping, and we won't open prior to 8:00 a.m. on Black Friday as well. We're doing a very focused direct mail campaign, again, to bring the consumer back in, lots and lots of digital marketing. And what our focus is really going to be on is, 'tis the season for decking the halls, good cheer, making memories, shopping safely, showing kindness. This particular campaign's going to share uplifting messages, remind the customer what really is important, emphasizing the way that Park Meadows can deliver joy by shopping safely, and just even reminding folks, if they don't come in, if you see this good cheer, this message about holiday, we just hope that it will help heal the community a little bit from all of the difficulties and people bossing them around. We have a very extensive Instagram and Facebook campaign. I'm not going to be the one who talks about that because... The other aspect, which is very fun, and I will give complete and total credit to Whitney Miller, our director. This holiday season, we had to also do a variance to bring in Santa, just because, I mean, and the whole thought process. And we were already, of course, doing holiday in January, February, like we always do, but by May, when it was starting to become fairly evident that this was going to hang around for a while, she started working with a local decor company, Alpine Artisans, and they designed this two-tiered plexiglass sleigh. The bad news is, it's the only way you'll get to see Santa is with reservations, so I feel kind of sad about that. But they will be able to come in front of the non-glass plexiglass, they can take off their masks, and their picture will be taken, and Santa will be right there in the photo with them. So you still can get your picture taken with Santa. We will have selfie stations all over. There's a lot of little fun extra things that we're adding. She's adding a little more plush to some of the banners that will be in center court. And you know, we do really want to thank you for our continued partnership and the support. We want you to also know how much we're looking forward to 2021 and how much it is our intentions really to be here for the community for decades to come. I won't be here, but I think Park Meadows will still be here in time for the next pandemic 100 years. 100 years.
None of us want to be here for the next pandemic, so we're, and we want you to be there for forever, so I'm saying no more pandemics.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, Pam. And again, Whitney, you guys do such tremendous work every year, but this year, I think, Herculean efforts above and beyond, I think your leadership, you're championing the business community, the retail community, and really setting a bar that, as you know, has been extended throughout this country. The work that you did to get the mall opened has been duplicated and copied, and I know when I was with the metro mayors and they heard what you were doing, that was the most requested, can you please send me that? And we really very much appreciate the partnership. I want to give council an opportunity to make some comments, so does anybody have any questions or thoughts they'd like to share with Pam? I know, other than our deepest gratitude, so when?
Yes, first deepest gratitude, but also how fortunate I feel that you've been through downturns, and you have different causes, of course, but you have the proactive mindset to have allowed us to reopen. If it hadn't been you, we wouldn't have been open, I'm pretty sure, so thank you, I'm just...
It was really all of us. It is important, though, what's different about this is it's very, very important that we all champion how important bricks and mortar is to the community.
Yes.
I know you folks are big leaders in that, and so that's why I wanted to make sure I delivered that bricks and mortar message.
Thank you.
Jay?
Yeah, and then Pam, as you know, last week was fall break for Douglas County School District, and so instead of going to a resort in Mexico, we went to our local retail resort a whole bunch. So I just wanted to compliment, it was a really smooth experience, and it was good foot traffic, there was a lot of people, we had to wait an hour to go to Cheesecake Factory, which I loved as a council member, but the whole process of everywhere we went was very smooth. It's different, obviously, but I think people respect that, and all the stores did a great job in making things as smooth as it could be in this environment.
The retailers and the restaurants, they really have just been superstars. We talk about it in our office all the time, when you have to go out there and see them and talk to them and work with them on things, they're just, they're the best.
Yeah.
They really are.
A great job to you and Whitney, so.
Yeah, I would just, so I've been to the retail resort a lot, that's what I do, but I would just say that one of the things I'm really hopeful for, and I think the way that we reopened and the experience that you're offering still today at Park Meadows and keeping that focus, like you said, around how it feels and how it looks, will be the reason that it thrives even better after this epidemic, because I think people are realizing that online shopping is interesting and necessary and is not an experience, and the fact that we have what we have here in Lone Tree to offer them, I think is going to come back, you know, even better than before based on the work that you've done in the interim. So thank you for everything that you're pulling off.
Yeah, who doesn't, I mean, online is great, you know, we have a lot of online businesses at Park Meadows, two Amazons, but that, who doesn't miss, I mean, in addition to a lot of things, getting on an airplane and going to Mexico for spring break, or just going shopping and trying on, you know, 20 dresses and 30 pairs of shoes, I mean, who doesn't miss that?
Well, I'm still doing it, just with a face mask. Yeah, I mean, I think, who, what I miss is not wearing the face mask while I'm doing it, but I think what's great about Park Meadows is you've still provided that opportunity to go in and do that. And I unfortunately believe in retail therapy, and retail therapy only exists if I can physically touch it, so I couldn't support your bricks and mortar more. Mike?
My message is primarily of gratitude. Thank you for the accomplishments last year under very tough conditions. Thank you for your optimism going forward in terms of what you can achieve. We are so proud to have the mall as a part of our city, and thank you and your staff and the people that have been creative, innovative, risk-taking, and your priority on public safety and security. So it's a great partnership, and we're very proud to have you be a part of it, Pam.
I think the measure of any relationship of any kind is how you get through the difficult times, and I think that, at least to us at Park Meadows, the city of Lone Tree, the council, even the people in here individually and personally, I think it speaks to, you know, how we will come eventually out of this as well.
I think the resilience is there, and I don't want to also miss the opportunity, Whitney, you know, you two are the leanest team in the state of Colorado, probably the country, and what you two individually have accomplished is really remarkable, and it, we appreciate you very, very much. You're not the first standing at the podium, but we know how hard you work and the value you bring and the great partnership with you as well, so thank you for that. And again, Pam, you know, resiliency and pivoting and leadership, and you really, all three qualities you embody, so we are very, very grateful. Thank you for coming and talking to us about this challenging period, but I think with, as Mike said, this optimistic look till, we cannot wait to close the door on 2020 and welcome the 25th year of the Park Meadows Retail Resort in our community, and looking forward to celebrating that year with you both. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, Jeff, are you coming back up, or are we just going to flip up? There we go, all right. So really, we are here to talk about the Business Improvement District, so I will look for a motion from our council.
I move to adopt Resolution 20-27, a resolution approving the 2021 operating plan and budget for the Park Meadows Business Improvement District.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, and again, our deepest thanks and gratitude to both of you, thank you for being here this evening, we very much appreciate it. Okay, moving on to our agenda, we've got Resolution 20-28, 'Tis the Season for Business Improvement District, so this is a resolution approving the 2021 operating plan and budget for the Lone Tree Business Improvement District, affectionately known as kind of our Entertainment District area, and once again, Jeff Hallwell is going to introduce this, and then joining him this evening is representative from the Lone Tree BID, and Zach White.
Well, thank you again, Mayor and Council.
Welcome back, Jeff.
It's great to be here again, and I'm also thrilled to introduce Resolution 2028, which is approving the operating plan and budget for the Lone Tree Business Improvement District. And just like the previous discussion, the budget arrived on time, staff has reviewed it thoroughly, and we're recommending approval of the budget. Next slide, please. Just for reference of you in the audience, that the Lone Tree BID was created in 2015 to maintain and improve the economic performance of the businesses within its portion of the Lone Tree Entertainment District, and its primary functions are landscape and property maintenance, snow removal, and common area enhancements. Next slide. As you'll see from the map, the district boundaries include those portions of the Entertainment District north of Park Meadows Drive and west of the Element Hotel and east of Yosemite Street. Next slide, please. And, you know, this list will show since 2015, or the last five years, what has been accomplished in and around the Business Improvement District, some of them are district accomplishments, some of them are from the community, but it's, there have been many things that have happened around the district, whether it's from the public infrastructure side on the left or from individual business investments on the right. What I think is important to note is that this budget that you'll be, that you've been received and will be reviewing is, includes what was supposed to happen this year, but due to property tax delays, it will be done in 2021, plaza enhancements that they're looking to do, as well as other investments in the district. And then on the right, you'll see that there's at least two business closures, one due to COVID, one due to a termination of a lease, but Sweet Tomatoes and Robusto Room are vacancies that, you know, are on the market, they'll be looking for new tenants. I am disappointed to say that it'll probably be more, this area is full of businesses that are COVID-challenged, as you might imagine. The United Artists Theater is temporarily closed and will be, and have been communicating with them about their future. So I think 2021 will also be full of a lot of work that we need to focus on, but for right now, we're excited to talk about the budget and have Zach White, who represents the BID, join us and speak about the budget and the operating plan. So next slide is simply the resolution that you'll need to consider, we recommend it, and Zach will present the budget itself.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. And welcome, Zach, please. Jeff's going to wipe down that podium, and you can just step right up there. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be with you here tonight. Jeff stole my thunder, my presentation was the Tattoo Parlour is gone.
Yeah.
That is, although it is a business that is closed, that's one we've been waiting for a lease to terminate and a new position to come in there. 2020's been hard on the Lone Tree BID, I think you can imagine. We held a meeting early in the year, it was actually about mid-March, maybe one of the first telephonic meetings we had held, and the first meeting, we heard we have not received the property taxes we anticipated, and we don't know if we're going to get them. So immediately, the board went into a little bit of panic mode and wondered, what can we do this year? You know, the plan for 2020 was the long-awaited plaza improvements, we have the approvals, we have the money finally, and with the delay in property tax receipts, the board decided, let's just keep the bid looking open for business, let's keep it clean, let's keep it beautiful. So we continued with our typical landscape and maintenance program. Our contractor did a great job of keeping the parking lots clean, although one trashcan got stolen this year, it was bolted to the ground and somebody walked off with it somehow, we're still not sure, I think it's probably in Jeff's backyard.
That I can guarantee you is not.
So we continued with our parking lot maintenance program, our landscape maintenance program, and we've started to look at other things that we can do to beautify the area. There are a number of trees that need to come down and have come down during this year, and in 21, we'll start a tree replacement program, which will help add color and life to the community, to the area. And as we move into the holidays this year, the board recognizing that they didn't spend all the money that they had anticipated, allocated a little bit more to holiday decorations, keeping the city looking beautiful, keeping that part of the city looking excited and inviting people into the complex to know that businesses are still open. We have seen some closures, Sweet Tomatoes and the Tattoo Parlour closed, the landlord for the Tattoo Parlour is actively looking for another tenant that's a little more family-friendly and more conducive to the type of entertainment that goes on within the bid. One of the big struggles going into next year is going to be, we don't know what the theater's doing yet.
Right.
That's a big question, right now, all Regal Theaters are closed, and they're a big driver behind some of the theater and plaza improvements. So that's something that we'll be watching going into 2021 and determining how and when to restart our root capital improvements program there on the plaza. So I continue to interact with theater representatives, I know Jeff does as well, so we'll be able to hopefully figure that out in the first couple of months of the year and then get started once the weather's permitting. We hope for a good holiday season, the restaurants are still open and they're still doing business. Many were able to take advantage of outdoor seating options over the summer, and I think are looking at how to continue doing that through the winter, maybe getting some heaters or tents, whatever that may be. But those businesses are still open, please go visit them, they need your support. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot to present today. Most of our budget from 2020 was just shifted into 2021. We'll go into the year with a very healthy fund balance, we did in the end collect the majority of the property taxes that were outstanding, so we will move into the next year with a healthy budget, ready to get going if the world permits it. If there are any questions or if you have suggestions or comments for what the bid could do, you know, we'd certainly appreciate those, and I think the board would be open to hearing what council would like to see go on in that property as well.
Thanks, Zach, I'll look to council if there's comments or thoughts you would like to share, questions you may have. So council has discussed the bid in that area, and we recognize there's tremendous opportunity there, and I think it's something that's been brought to council's attention by the residents in our community as well, and I think you're familiar with the Vision Book that was created a number of years ago, but I think what our residents have said and communicated to us is they're very interested in seeing that become a more walkable area, where you don't just come to do one thing, but if you can create more of a plaza atmosphere that would, you know, have people doing maybe that one thing, but then walking over to do something else. And I know the city has been very interested in partnering with the bid to see those type of improvements, so we too are very disappointed and certainly understand, this year, the conservative decision to, let's hold off on any big capital expenditures, the city did the same.
Yeah.
But as we look to rebuild in 2021, and I think we're all looking to rebuild, I think getting, I think the foot traffic there and creating those opportunities for people to come and gather outdoors is going to be even, you know, more important. So I think if your feedback that could be provided from council would be that, that we do think that those improvements that increase the walkability of that area will, it's one of the reasons the city made the investment to put in the traffic signal, it's why we built the park in that area, is because we see that as really a little gem, and I think there's tremendous opportunity. There's other businesses in that area that are vacant as well, and we are certainly going to be having a renewed attention and focus on that, and just want to let you know that we've already had discussions as a council, that is a priority area for us, we would like to see revitalized in our community, because I think there, it's tremendous opportunity, and I think the people that could walk to that location, there is a ton of folks in that area, and I think we just need to work together to find a reason to have them start walking over there and riding their bikes and all of those other things, so.
Absolutely, I appreciate the feedback, I'll provide that to the board.
Yeah, and thank you again for coming tonight, so we very much appreciate that, and I can't, you know, I can't let you leave without telling you to say hello to your dad from us, and that Lone Tree sends our very, very best wishes for him and your family.
I will do that.
All right, okay, well, I will look for a motion from council.
I move to adopt Resolution 20-28, a resolution approving the 2021 operating plan and budget for the Lone Tree Business Improvement District.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, and again, Zach, thanks so much, it was so great to see you. Take good care. Okay, moving on, 8.3, we have a public hearing this evening on Ordinance 20-08, an ordinance amending Section 6-2-70 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code concerning commercial solicitations. This is second reading, and I am opening our public hearing, and I will turn it over to our wonderful city attorney, Linda Michell.
Mayor and city council, thank you for allowing me to present for the third time, three times a charm, Ordinance 20-08, and it is regarding your commercial solicitation regulations. Next slide, thanks. So just by way of background, currently, the city does regulate the ability of folks to go door-to-door in your community and your residential areas, and it does require that all solicitors register with the city and carry around a registration card when they go door-to-door. The city also maintains a no-visitation list whereby residents can sign up to be identified on that list, and solicitors are supposed to know about the list and not visit those homes that have registered with the city. And the city also provides that there's a prohibition on entering private properties that are on that no-visitation list, as well as properties where there are signs posted "No Trespassing," as well as the no-solicitation list by the city. And finally, and most importantly for purposes of this presentation, the city currently has restricted hours for times in which solicitors can visit residences, and that is found at 6-270 subsection B, and it allows commercial solicitations between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. or 30 minutes after sunset, whichever is later. Next slide. So that's just a picture of the sticker that is provided to folks who do want to sign up for the no-solicitation or no-visit list. Go ahead. Go ahead. And I believe Mr. Rob told you at our last first reading meeting that there are probably about 900 residents currently registered on that list. So very quickly, you've heard this before. The legal framework, obviously, door-to-door solicitations implicate the First Amendment because we're talking about free speech rights. So any regulations that impose restrictions on free speech rights must serve a substantial governmental interest. And that substantial governmental interest must be justified with evidence and data to support it. Next slide. So these First Amendment principles were put to the test in a case involving the city of Castle Rock. And Active Environmental, as I explained to you before, was a pesticide control company that was very successful going door-to-door in Denver and other places throughout Colorado and probably the country. And they set up shop in Castle Rock, and within a week, due to the hours restrictions that Castle Rock imposed, similar to Lone Tree's, they pulled up shop and said that it wasn't very productive for them to be, or financially lucrative for them to be in Castle Rock, and ultimately sued the city, the town of Castle Rock, on the basis of First Amendment principles. So the court decided in that case, they found in favor of Active Environmental, unfortunately for many jurisdictions who have similar regulations. And they found that there was really no data or evidence to support the curfew with respect to commercial solicitations. So with that, we are recommending that the city, at least for the time being, repeal that subsection of your code that relates to the time restrictions, and that the city still has very vibrant and robust commercial solicitation regulations otherwise, including that no visitation list, as well as posting their signs, posting their properties with no solicitation and no trespassing signs. So with that, I would entertain any questions?
Thank you. Any questions on this? I think we understand it. We just don't necessarily like it, but appreciate the presentation again, and I think your thoroughness in protecting the city. And again, always want to encourage residents who don't want to be contacted to register with the city, and I think that could alleviate the issue that we were trying to address with the hours. So this is a public hearing, so I am going to see if there is any, if there is anybody that has been submitted public comment. So I'll ask.
Mayor, I don't see any requests for public comment.
Okay. So I will close our public hearing, and I, well, I guess we're going to pause for a minute to allow, I feel like we gave fair notice on the public comment period here, and it was actually an article in the paper even about the fact that this action was taking place this evening. So I'm comfortable closing our hearing, and I'll look for a motion from council.
I move to adopt Ordinance 20-08, an ordinance amending Section 6-2-70 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code Concerning Commercial Solicitations on second reading. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your guidance. We appreciate it. Okay, next on our agenda is a police department and Resolution 20-29, a resolution approving a third replacement intergovernmental dispatch service agreement between the city of Lone Tree and our good partners at the town of Parker. And I think our city manager will be...
Chief is going to join us remotely.
Oh, he is going to join remotely. Okay. All right. Chief, are you...
I'm here.
Okay, we hear you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just need the slides. So this is a resolution. Can you go back to the, that was too fast. So it's a, it's a third replacement IGA for the dispatch services for Parker. And go ahead and go to the next slide. So in 2020, we renegotiated the formula for costs, and basically agreed to a more stable formula. So it's a three-year average between total authorized sworn strength and citizen-generated calls, and it took out the more volatile part of the agreement, which was tracking officer-initiated activities and administrative calls. Next slide. So it amends, it also amends the dates for the budgetary reporting each year. So the final budget to be reported will be August 15th, and changed from the preliminary budget by August 1st to final by December 1st. Next slide. So one of the things that I don't think was in here, and I don't know if I mentioned it last time, but one of the things the IGA does is actually, it's going to be in a lag year before we calculate any changes to the thing. So it's going to slow down the changes a little bit, and I think allow us, again, even more stabilization on the agreement. So it reduced the calculated cost from 43% down to 38%, and this is approximate savings in 2021 of about, I believe, about $90,000 compared to what it would have been had we not renegotiated the formula, although that's a moving target with, you know, different savings due to personnel issues or whatever, what have you. But it also stabilizes the IG cost to some degree and establishes what we believe is going to be a much more equitable formula moving forward. Next slide. And I think that says questions. Yes?
That's what it says.
Any question?
And you did let us know that the last time.
Okay, I couldn't remember if I told you that.
And yeah, just to summarize, council was, this was presented in study session to us. But again, we always let negotiation down and appreciate the chief's good work and all, Seth, all of the staffs. I know it wasn't just the chief in those negotiating rooms. So any questions for the chief on this resolution? And I'm not seeing any. Again, keep saving us money. So I'll look for a motion from council.
That's what the police department does, Mayor. We save money.
Yeah, that's your motto. That's the best laugh we've gotten in 2020.
To protect and serve.
And save money. And save money, yeah. Is that going to go on the vehicle? All right, thanks for that chuckle, chief. All right, council, I'll look for the motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 20-29, a resolution approving a third replacement intergovernment dispatch services agreement between the city of Lone Tree and the town of Parker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. And again, during our virtual meetings, we've become accustomed, council has deemed their time over to the mayor. And so I think there's two important things council would like me to communicate. Please vote. I think the most important things we can do as a community are vote for the people that represent us. We appreciate your support. We want to make sure you are exercising the most valuable right we have as United States citizens, is to elect our representatives. So please vote. And then also, we had some great presentations this evening from our local business community. And the other thing we would like you to do is please shop locally. It's never been more important to spend money in your local community. So with that, thank you for joining us this evening, and our meeting is adjourned.